The Swain County Commissioner Regular Session, April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five at five thirty. Governor, would you please lead us in our pledge?
Basic colors, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty. Are there any adjustments to our agenda this evening? Brothers, I got everything? Okay. We'll go to our next administrative reports, our tax collector report, Ms. April.
Small correction on here, I still have it's two thousand twenty-four and we've moved on to twenty-five. But the total ad valorem and fees year to date is eight million four hundred eighty-four thousand seven hundred twenty-one dollars and sixty-one cents. Total waste fee collected year to date is one million one hundred sixty-nine thousand two hundred seventy-two dollars and ninety-eight cents. Total revenues collected year to date are nine million six hundred sixty-three thousand nine hundred ninety-four dollars and fifty-nine cents. Percentage of budget tax collected is a hundred and forty-five point five-four percent. The total ad valorem and fees that were collected in the month of March are three hundred and eighty-five thousand six hundred ninety-six dollars and thirty-three cents. And the county vehicle tax collected for the month of March is fifty-nine thousand two hundred forty-six dollars and seventy-one cents.
You guys have any questions? We got them. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. April. Alright, next is our financial report. Uh, Ms. Kelly had to leave, so I think Lottie's going.
I'll be reading that. So this again is for March twenty twenty-five. For our general fund revenues, total revenues for the month was one million four hundred eighty-six thousand six hundred dollars and seventy-one cents. Total revenues year to date, sixteen million eight hundred fifty thousand eleven dollars and nine cent. For percentage of revenues received year to date at forty-five point two-four percent. Expenditures for the month, one million three hundred fifty-five thousand nine hundred thirty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents. Total expenditures year to date, fifteen million seven hundred ninety-one thousand seven hundred eleven dollars and forty-nine cents. With a percentage of expenditures paid out year to date at thirty-five point fifty-one percent, which leaves us at a current year surplus of one million fifty-eight thousand two hundred ninety-nine dollars and sixty cents. Solid Waste Fund, total revenue year to date is one million three hundred eighty-seven thousand four hundred forty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents. Total expenditures year to date, one million forty-three thousand five hundred thirty-four dollars and thirteen cents. For a current year surplus of three hundred forty-three thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy-one cents. Social Services Fund, total revenue year to date, two million seven hundred eighty-one thousand eighty-nine dollars and twenty-seven cents. Total expenditures year to date, four million eighty-seven thousand two hundred ninety-one dollars and ninety-five cents. For a current year deficit of one million three hundred six thousand two hundred two dollars and sixty-eight cents. Health Department Fund, total revenue year to date, nine hundred and one thousand twelve dollars and ninety-six cents. Total expenditures year to date, one million four hundred twenty-two thousand three hundred eighty-one dollars and thirty-three cent. For a current year deficit of five hundred twenty-one thousand six hundred three hundred sixty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Any questions, guys?
That they have to say, what's, what's the deal?
So some of it is they are a month behind, so we have to expend for the month and then it's claimed the next month. So what we spend in March is not claimed until April, and then it's not actually even paid by the state until closer to the end of the, uh, end of the month. So, so they're always a month behind, and that's everything that comes out. So that's salary benefits, any bills paid, that sort of thing that we're claiming to the state for reimbursement. And some of it is, you're never getting a hundred percent back. So some of it's just true deficit, um, that's county dollar.
About how much of that, do we, do we, do we typically have a average of percentage of what we get back?
Um, it changes month to month based on what their workers are coding, what people they're dealing with. Normally, it's, right now, they're probably getting about sixty-five percent back of their, of their expenditures.
Any other questions, guys? Alright, uh, need a motion to accept this report as it's being given to us?
Make a motion.
All in favor? Passes unanimously. Alright, next is the Health Department Budget Revision Number Six.
So the Health Department, you know, just gets money from time to time from the state level, this is a very small amount. So it's child fatality, which is dealing, um, with child health specific. Normally, that's nurses that are, um, coding to this and using this funding. So they did receive an additional one thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars. And as you can see, it's been put towards salary, FICA, and retirement. So again, just a small additional funding from the state.
Any questions?
They put towards salary. Who's salary money they put to?
It, it doesn't go towards someone's specific salary. It goes, so we pay their employee and they have to do what's called a time allocation, which shows how much time they've spent in one program, and that's how we pull the money down from the state. So it doesn't, it's not additional salary to someone, but we put it in the line item for salary because they're spending that money. So they're not getting additional salary, but we're having to pull it down at the state, so we put it in the expense of salary.
So does that just go into like the salary line item, correct?
Yeah, just on their budget. It's not, it's not re-added, it's not added to anyone's salary specific. So their salaries are remaining the same, it's just the additional money goes in to help cover what would be a deficit.
That means it, it's state money, uh, we're putting back in there, so I'll make a motion, we accept, um, Budget Revision Number Six.
Alright, we got a motion and a second. All in favor? Passes unanimously. Alright, Mr. Crawford, I think you know the.
Yeah, I know the drill.
Drill, so I'll just let you go ahead and, and, and go ahead, just the clock is right here.
Righto, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you tonight. See my voice is a little bit off. Um, my name is Fred Crawford, my address is P O Box four eighty-six in Whittier. Uh, I'm a farmer, I own with my wife, uh, and operate Dogwood Farms on Conley's Creek. And first, I want to thank each of you for your service to our community. Uh, I know you have, uh, full-time jobs and that serving as county commissioners, uh, takes a lot of extra time and effort. And you, you wear many hats in this role. And tonight, I want to talk to you about one that you might not think about very often. Uh, these days, we hear a lot about social media influencers. Uh, well, believe it or not, you are all influencers. Um, why? Well, because this meeting is being broadcast live on YouTube right now. And, um, it is saved on the, the government YouTube channel. Um, and whether you realize it or not, what you say here reaches beyond this room. It reaches people at home and folks who couldn't be here in person but care about what happens in this county. I want to take a moment to thank Cindy and the technician who set up these microphones. And, um, they do everything to make sure that these meetings are publicly accessible. And that effort is vital to keeping this, keeping our government open and transparent. So with that in mind, I have a simple request. Please use the microphones. I ask that when you're speaking, you, you position yourself so your voice is clear, not just for those of us sitting here in the audience, but for everyone listening online. I'll admit, I don't hear as well as I used to. I've spent a lot of time around heavy equipment, tractors, and, uh, my hearing isn't what it used to be. And even sitting out here, sometimes I can't hear what's going, what's being said if you're not speaking into the microphone. But I know the folks at home can't hear you either. So, um, I know I've been a little bit, uh, tongue-in-cheek with this influencers thing, but, um, and, and I know that, you know, being a social influ- influencer isn't what you're signed up for. And, and speaking into a microphone may not come naturally to you. But, um, and it might even feel awkward, because we're not used to doing this, right? But the work you do here matters. And, um, I appreciate anything that you can do so that the folks at home and the folks in the audience can hear, um, when you're conducting the business of the government, alright? So again, thank you again for your, for your time and your service to the community.
That is all the public comment we have. We'll go on to our next agenda item, which is voting. Uh, our inspections fee, the inspections the department came last meeting, um, and I think we got a copy of that in our, packet, and, um, does anybody have any questions about any of those fees or anything? Jason, do you want to come up and say anything about it? I, I know you talked about it last time, but I just want to make sure.
More or less, just whatever Yuns want to do. We're just proposing a way to maybe generate a little more revenue, maybe help out the county a little bit. So it's whatever Yuns decide, and like I said, I believe I've talked to all of Yuns and tried to explain to the best of my knowledge, how it operates and rolls out, so, uh, it's all in Yuns' hands. I don't want to be too big of an influence on it. Either way, we're good. I'm sure Janie's the same way. We're just trying to generate a little extra revenue, maybe help out.
Have you checked with the other counties to see if we're in line with the other counties?
We're pretty close. I mean, but there again, our land base is so much smaller, so I kind of feel partial to it. It should come at a premium to build in Swain County.
Any questions?
So we're about in line. I mean, we're within sense of one another.
Uh, I, I want the general public sorted to understand it's necessary that we have inspection for our buildings. We won't.
It affects your insurance. It affects your insurance right directly.
And it needs to be done safely, and inspections are important. And, uh, uh, the cost of everything's up too, so. Uh, you know, uh, sometimes you have to make more than one trip, and I mean, the average,
the lowest I had one contractor tell was two, two or three, is when they're doing turnkey, it's three hundred and twenty-five dollars a square foot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's, uh, that's, uh, from what it used to be.
Oh, yeah, way up. I mean, yeah, there's people that can do it better, but, or do it cheaper, I wouldn't say do it better, but. You, as one would say, you get what you pay for.
I understand.
Well, fourteen years ago, it was a hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Right.
Exactly.
Yeah.
See, well, increase.
Yeah. But like I said, it's.
You got to work pretty well, uh, power right up, ain't you?
Yeah, we're close. Like I said, we've got five or six permits down there, but we're twenty-four hours. If you call, we usually get you in twenty-four hours. If it's, power goes out, and it's on the weekends, we come in and put it back, help them get it back on. If it's going to be late in the afternoon, we'll stay over, make sure we get it, we have to sign off on electricity so they can get power. So Duke will come and hook it up, and inspection's got to be sent in. And we've worked hand in hand, like I said, with Duke a lot, most of the time. Most time they're there within a couple hours after us, we'll call them plus email them, so they have a heads up to know what's coming. Then when it comes down from Duke, from wherever it comes from, Charlotte or wherever, they're ahead of the game. A lot of times, they've already got it hooked back up, but they got to clear up their side of the paperwork. I'm waiting on that and requests to come in.
Well, I appreciate you making the extra effort to make sure they get their power back on when they type a service change.
I know what it could be without, without power, and then some people, and they're on oxygen and stuff like that, and they're living, having to go move to somebody else's house so they can survive. Um, the sooner you can get them back home, I, I believe a person heals better at home anyway.
Appreciate the job that y'all do, uh, it's, and again, I say it's an important job that we have in, in our county, so.
Yep. Any other questions, guys?
On the other counties, I will say that they do a base rate, and then once you go over a certain square footage, it starts adding up. So you really got to know specifically what square footage it is. And when you add it all up, plus they have, a lot of counties have a two-hundred flat rate on the administrative fees. So they'll have, the, the permit will be, look like it's cheap, and, but you got to add every time you go to them, you got a two-hundred-dollar administration fee. I mean, if like our temporary power form, we do it, do it, usually we put it in our permits where all we got to do is the paperwork side of it. Uh, in other counties, they charge two-hundred dollars to sign their name, more or less, because the applicant fills out the thing and then they witness it. And then all they do is send it in to Duke and get the power back on, and they get two-hundred dollars just, just for doing the paperwork, plus whatever fee it is for early power. Their administration fees is flat, so if you come in and do a permit with us and you don't come pick it up, there's nothing you charge for it. Alright, you don't charge until you sign for it. We don't accept payment till they sign for it. Well, in other counties, when you come in to file, you got to lay two-hundred dollars down to get them to fill out the permit. So they're collecting two-hundred dollars whether or not they come back ever and get the permit. Well, people's got a right to change your mind, but they don't never refund that money.
No, it's, it's hard to do.
So there's other ca- other ways that, so when you get to figuring all those fees in there together, you're about, we just do a flat rate that way, and we went up from eighty to a hundred dollars on one trip. Like if we go out to do a, say somebody's doing a service change, we, we was doing eighty dollars, so I think we bumped it to a hundred. Um, so it's, uh, I think it's comparable to all the other counties, especially the one-trip fees. Most counties around here are at a hundred dollars, and it also helps us out, I guess, downstairs, not having to make change as much and stuff like that. And I, I talked to some of them, like in Jackson County, that was the main reason why they done that, was to try to generate, because there's, you know, paying the salaries, and a lot of times, drive time, Yuns all know that in the county. You might have one on the head of, of Alarca Highlands, one in Fontana Lake Estates, and one up Conley's Creek. Well, that's pretty much half a day in just driving. You know, time, you spend enough time to do your inspection and get back in the vehicle and drive and go to the next one, so you, you got a lot of travel time. But we make it work out when we get busy, we split up and, so.
Which counties did we compare to?
I compared, I'd have to look at them papers.
Haywood, Macon, Turkey.
Yeah. And Graham's a little bit cheaper, I will give you that.
Clay?
Yeah, I didn't look at Clay, but we can. I think we looked at them, but we printed off some that was kind of in the same price range, to give you an idea.
So we got a motion to accept the new fee schedule for the inspections.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Passes unanimously.
Alright, thank you, guys.
We'll get at it.
Alright, next is the re-evaluation contract, uh, we were, we were given at our last meeting. Lottie, do you want to, uh, it's, you know, go over it again or anything?
So, so this is with, uh, Vincent Valuations. They have many counties in the state of North Carolina that they do, they have their own team that they would send in. So unlike before where it was a mix of our people and the, um, company, our people were having help. This one, we would not. I mean, they would come in, you know, to ask questions or whatever, but then they're out. This is going to be a full list and measure, which means it's going to be very extensive. The plan is that they would start this summer for it to be ready to roll in twenty-eight. So, um, you know, Kevin, one of the questions Kevin had was about payments. It would be an over time, it wouldn't be an all-upfront, because it is a per parcel basis of forty-three dollars. So a total amount of five hundred and forty-three is what they've estimated based on the parcel numbers that we have right now.
Five hundred and forty-three?
Thousand dollars, yeah.
Well, that would knock our tax increase in the head for several years. Well, it's really a point, it's really the point of doing.
Yeah, the stadium would carry on the thing we have to.
We are at the eight, this will be the eight years that we are required to do it.
Unfunded mandate, they tell us we have to.
But do we have to spend five hundred and what did you say?
Four, five hundred and forty-three thousands the total. Um, we, there are other companies, most of them said no because of our size, they didn't want to come out this far. Um, the other companies that we have are really like a one or two-person team, so we would have to actually provide them manpower, because this is going to be in the field, walking and actually viewing properties instead of doing it from overhead or by pictures or something.
They're not going to do it by the air?
Mm-mm, mm-mm. No, they'll actually be here, um, in office from time to time, and then they'll actually be out in the field. They've asked, you know, for like safety vests and something that says Swain County Contractors, so people know who they are.
They may get to make some good Swain County contractors. It's a whole lot of money, y'all.
It, it is.
There's no way around it, it, it doesn't no excuse.
No, I mean, we have to do it, it is the state required.
Does it have to be in a company like us, or can we do it ourselves?
We don't have the actual ability to do it ourselves. One, we don't have the manpower within county, uh, uh, in county employees. But then the other is actually having the correct credentials and ability to do it and then provide that information back at the state level.
But if we have the manpower, we could do it.
Yeah, probably so, but I think he's, um, the final conversation was they'll probably bring a team of eight or ten people in to, to work on this, so.
How long will the process take?
They, the plan would, they would start this summer, and it would be about a year and a half, because it has to be ready by twenty-eight is when our next one is actually due at the state, so. But it's just going to take them that much time to be able to review the properties, and then they, they do their, their piece of the work, and then they come in and kind of talk and review things with those in the tax office, just to make sure that they're in agreeance with what they're seeing out in the field.
It's a whole lot of money.
I want to say, and we could get the, exactly what April may know, um, when we had the last one done, it was probably around two hundred and fifty, two hundred and eighty-five thousand. Um, but that was from the air, they did not go out and do a full list and measure.
Couldn't we do it again for that?
Hmm, I don't know, that'd be a state question, because I'm not sure if the state requires a, a full list and measure every so often or not.
The problem with not going out to field and doing it via the air is you will miss buildings that way. Um, we had, um, we missed some unpermitted, um, residential things that people had put up themselves. And if it's just a shed, and it's just a shed, but these are things that people are living in, I mean, their, their house, their rentals. And so you, you can find those, and those, but that's good for two different things. You need to have some safety checks to make sure that people are safe in what they're living in. Um, and that they go out, they take, um, three to five pictures of every residence, so we have them on file. And that helps, a lot of people use that when they're looking into properties to purchase it, or just for records of what their houses look like with the years.
So land that we're coming to do a walk-through to make sure we ain't damaged its property. I'm not for spending that kind of money. If we can do it in your house, we can find a different route, it's too much money.
I mean, we got, this is pretty, is this time sen- time sensitive?
It is only because of named for them, whoever's going to do it's going to have to get started in the next couple of months. So we want to make sure that we have a contract signed and ready to go before, you know, that way that they can actually start on time.
You guys got any comments?
Uh, the only comment that I've got is it, it is necessary, and we pretty much have to do, we have to have somebody to do this work. And to go out, I remember one time back in, in our history that we, we tried to send people out to do the revale in-house. You know, ha- had quite a bit of friction between property owners and what was determined by it. So my thing is, it needs to be a professional company that comes in and does it. And then it also needs to be, um, somebody, these people will compare property values with other places, other of our size and our, 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 uh, rate, so, um, I say we don't have a whole lot of choice, matter, uh, because it is time-sensitive, and they will need to get started on it right away.
I would love to do it in-house to save us money, but I don't even know if we've ever had eight people working in the tax office at a time. And I'm not including the tag, I'm just including the tax office side of it, so I, I don't know if that would even be feasible.
If we can do a flyover, just like April said, i- i- if we do miss a few porridge on, sitting out in the yard or something, what's the big deal if we save money? You know, if we do miss, uh, uh, somebody's shed they built to drive their car.
But my question.
It's people, people owns their land, if they want to build a extra shed or something, it's nothing to me, but, you know, going out to hunt and more money, and that's basically what that screw you're looking at right here is going to do. They're going out to hunt more tax stuff that they can tax us for. I'm not for none of that, especially giving them a heck of a million dollars to do it.
Well, is, and this is, if it's state mandated, though, we have, if it's state mandated that we have to have a full list and measure every eight, by every eight years, we have to do that.
Mr. Chairman, she just, April just said they done a flyover and done it, what, how many years ago? But that ain't that the way we done it the last time? So you could do it again.
I mean, it would be clarification with the state if we're wanting to ask what we require to do. It would be clarification to get from the state to say, do they require a full list and measure, or is this acceptable?
Let's table it, Mr. Chairman, until we can see if we can get by cheaper, what would it hurt for another, to the next meeting?
Make a motion, we postpone it.
I second it.
Okay. All in favor?
I'm willing to.
That'd give Lottie a chance to check around.
To be sure, you know, that we're not breaking any, anything the state's required.
Yeah, I see, you know, if it's state law.
Right, right.
We'll have to do it, but if, if we can get around and save a little money, why not?
Alright.
It's more a thing to state mandate, but they don't want to put any money into it.
That's exactly, that's the way all them work.
Alright, next we have our, our minutes from our, uh, past meetings, uh, uh, March fourth work session, March thirteenth joint work session with the town, March eighteenth regular session, and then the twenty, uh, the meeting on the twenty-fifth for our budget meeting, I believe that's correct, right, Bobby? I need.
I make a motion, we accept it.
Alright, I got a motion, I need a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Passes unanimously. Alright, next, we're moving on to new business. Anybody got any new mi- business that, uh, we need to go over?
I'd like to make a motion that we bring each employee to at least fifteen dollars an hour. The ones that's under fifteen dollars an hour, bring them up to fifteen dollars an hour. What'd you say, we had Lottie ten?
There's ten, yeah.
It's talking to break the bite to bring them up to ten, fifteen dollars an hour.
You're talking about those, the, the, the custodians and?
Everybody. Anybody that's making under fifteen dollars, any county employee. Mr. Chairman, that, that was supposed to have been took care of last budget. My understanding is everybody was, when we made, was supposed to hit the fifteen dollar, but we've left people out, which is not good at all. I mean, we give her a seven thousand dollar rate, but still, yeah, we've got employees out there making less than fifteen dollars an hour. You know? We can draw it out of the general fund. I think come next payday, that them boys at the trash can out there needs to have their fifteen dollars an hour on their check. It's ridiculous, when we can pass out big old chunks of money to certain people, but we can't give the ones that does the work a little bit of change, you know? It really revs me the wrong way.
I'll second his motion then, because I feel the same way, I mean.
Alright, and I wasn't, I wa- we, you know, some of us wasn't here last year to, to, to be that way, but I, I think it'd be good to bring them up to fifteen dollars an hour. So we got a motion and a second? All in favor? Alright. Any other new business, uh, that needs to be brought up?
I've got a little, a thing or two I would like to discuss.
Alright.
Just brought to my attention, that's the school board, I missed that, that in Eaton. For two years I've been down here, and we always get a friendly reminder that we're going to have a meeting. Well, I didn't get one, I didn't get one today either. Well, I didn't get one, I didn't get one today either. I know that maybe there's some folks who assume that I didn't be here. But if I would have got one, I would have loved to come down here and school board and have fun with y'all and that. But I found out. That we've got electric school bus. Mark sales, oh. You know how much electric school bus costs? Six hundred thousand dollars. But you get, you guess, you get the charging station with that, with that six hundred. It costs ninety two hundred. But what really gets you. Is when you buy a tag for that electric school bus. It costed twelve thousand dollars. To tag it. And. The topper of this whole story is. For them to get the grant. To get the electric school bus. They had to condemn one of their buses. Drill holes in the block so it couldn't be used and trash it. So they picked them out one to do that. And looking into it, you know how many school buses we could have bought for what the one electric school bus was? Four new school buses. We could have got for them to play with their one little electric. And this six hundred thousand. Is a two hundred and, what was it, seventy eight thousand dollar fence? I tell you, you're looking at over three quarters of a million dollars, the school board is blowed in. And how less or time? And now they come down here and asked us for two point six million more? I think maybe they have problems that money can't fix. Is what I think. But uh I just thought you just might find that interesting.
I know the. I know the electric school bus was a grant, so all the money that they spent out of it, they're gonna get back. At least that's my understanding from from what.
But Mister Chairman, a grant, that's a big old word, we always say, a grant. Free money, we we always throw that in. It's not. Somebody's paid taxes, get that grant money. That free money is coming out of somebody's pocket. There's no such thing as free money.
Uh I would disagree with that. Cause there are organizations out there who does have money, who have people who their money. That they've made to to give away, so, I mean, not not everything is through the government. Some of them are through private organizations that have high paying people who who give their money. I mean, that's that's just, that's mine.
Sort of like a nonprofit organization.
Um yeah, it could be that, or it could be, could be something else.
It's a big old word, or a chosen few to make a pocketful of money. But anyway, I'll bet you, the animal shelter, how are we doing?
Um I don't have updated numbers from Cali. But there was operating budget, of course, left over, so we should be pretty close to. Well, we had that five hundred thousand, there was a little bit left, and then we had the operating budget. Which we're not using a majority of that, so that was budgeted money for that building or for the program.
I thought we just had five hundred thousand.
For for that piece, but we had the operating expenses, which we talked about a couple meetings ago. About using that to buy, purchase things like what the animals have to have, supplies, feeding bowls, that sort of thing.
Operating budget was approved and raised. So they they won't be using it.
They won't be using all of it.
When are, when are we gonna run that job?
Um we can, I mean, it can go anytime, I was trying to wait closer till when. Where I actually know that we're gonna be opening and functioning as a department.
When do you think it's gonna be ready?
I'm hoping by the middle, end of June, middle of July. We're trying to get the DSS house finished up right now. We're getting real close on it, so. Things will speed up on the animal shelter today.
We've got the children's home right now ready.
It's, I'm getting ready to put the cabinets in, so when you get the cabinet, you're pretty well finished. Like a few doors and just a few small items.
If our county could stretch the money. As tight as we stretched that money for that animal shelter, we'd be in real good shape. Cause it just kept on going, going and going and never ended. But uh, that's a different story. That's all.
Chairman, you got anything? Alright, we'll go to our next thing with closed session. According to North Carolina General Statute one forty three dash three one eight point one one A three. Uh turning client privilege, I need a motion to go into through that reason.
Second.
All in favor? Pose likewise, passes three to one. And we'll come back out here.
All right, I need to entertain the motion to come back at a closed session.
Second.
All in favor? There was no decision right now as we were in closed session. Is, uh, last on our list is adjournment. Can I make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
A second. All in favor? Thank you guys. You all have a great evening.